The.
Oh, they're here for that?
That's the only thing, because they're presenting at City of Benton right now.
Oh.
And they're coming here. They're hoping to be here by between six and six fifteen.
Okay.
So.
Because I'm like, I like I said, I have until like seven oh five, seven ten.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not a lot on there.
I'm hoping we'll be there by then.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I would say.
I guess I could watch it later.
Ten, twenty, thirty. Thirty minutes tops for the first three, I would think, if they're on there.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, though, child would be in Texas.
Pleasant Valley Community School District Board of Education meeting Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Belmont Administration Center.
Yeah. Long time.
But I almost didn't remember the five thirty start time. And I just randomly, like, four twenty, looked at my phone. Because I was like, just, I'm gonna double check. Thank goodness I did.
Yeah.
We're just waiting for Nikhil.
I think I'm messaging her.
Hey, Christine.
I'm messaging her.
Do you have Christine's address?
Yeah, you want me to message her as well?
Yeah.
Ryan, have we had C D M I do with press before?
It is the job at the horse grove and the high school, I think.
There was high school?
Possibly part of it.
Thank you. I like your red for Valentine's Day.
Yeah, the first half.
Yeah, it's been going. We're starting to get into soccer season.
They're the ones that got to receive the award.
It's so hard to do that stuff.
I recognize trucks when I see them.
Like, I work too.
Yeah.
So.
I could get rest to come over here.
I know. I know.
Not me, Chris.
Did you hear of Christine?
Yeah, I don't like, try to get it all situated and organized. It's so hard, though, with the boys doing baseball. It's. It's like, I feel like all you can do is like a roller coaster. You just buckle in and hope for the best, because you don't know exactly what, how it's gonna play out. But, yeah, we've been doing good. You see, we do with Connor House and high school.
I think we're good. Well, he can get the high school.
And go organized. Well, I think everyone wants to do choir and piano, so I don't know if there's any other choice. I can make any choices that I want. Except the basketball.
I forgot.
And I walked out to my car, and I couldn't get him to fuck your personal.
I wasn't sure. What's the other college for them?
Where's my brain at?
Please start. I will be there in fifteen minutes. Um, in twenty minutes. Right? I'm looking at the bill. I'll say, yeah, I'm just waiting for you. I guess I can do it.
I haven't seen it tonight. They, they do.
I'm hoping to set the whole job to this. I see you.
Doesn't Nikhil get to her break? Gets her? We can do.
Well, I could move, because we got four people.
We can do the first meeting of the board and stuff. We can't do approval. We can't do approval. We can do.
When Brett, I don't. Or maybe we just all.
I think Nikhil will get some.
I mean, we could do. Get a lobby start.
Well, she has, her son has a band on schedule. So he'll come after.
Oh. The board meeting series, we can do that.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Do recognitions.
I'm sorry, I don't know. I think I can do it. I don't know if we can.
We'll just give him. Give him his time. Because once Nikhil gets here, we have four.
Then we're still, there's no less. There's no less.
I still don't know if Christine wants to answer.
No.
For those in attendance, we'll just be delayed here a little bit. Director Canwisher cannot be here tonight. Director Ayers was at the concert, the band concert. Dr. Wagley got delayed, so he'll be here probably in about next seven minutes. At that point, then we'll go ahead and get started. So we apologize for the delay here, but shortly we'll be started.
We'll forgive you this time.
Thank you.
Listen, Nikhil's coming home today. He said he'll be here.
He is back. Right, we'll be coming in the second. We just been coming. Just follow the order, whatever you need to do.
Yeah, you can use. I heard last time he wanted a copy of it, so he made it up later. And. So, um, I would have to ask for.
To say. Do you have, um, can you pull up last time's meetings? No, maybe minutes to get the, um. What you call it? Can you pull up last time's?
Hey, Brad. Wait, what happened?
Okay. Just, um. How she puts the agenda? So comfortable.
Whatever you say is just fine. I think you must have delayed at work.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, I'd like to start with the Pledgeable Agents, if we could all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the roll call. Vote the roll. Ms. Anderson? Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Canwisher? Mrs. Kunkel?
Here.
Dr. Wagley?
All right, I would, uh, I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Um, and I'd like to read our vision. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District that we shall provide the finest academic and curricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Um, next, I'd like to know if I could have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel. And then I'd like to, uh, I. I'm sorry. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I'm going to fill in for President Wagley until he arrives. And, uh, we'll start out with communications concerns and constructive ideas. Uh, we'll start with the board. Um, Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Mrs. Kunkel?
I have a few things.
Okay.
Um, first, I'd just like to thank the administrators and choir directors that, um, put on the district choral concert. Um, it was a great experience to see all of the choirs come together from elementary up through high school. And for me, as a, uh, parent that has an eighth grade student going into high school, it was great to see the different choirs that she would be able to potentially participate in. So thank you for allowing that to go on and, um, making that opportunity happen. Um, also, I wanted to say congratulations to Marcus Kavanaugh. He had a baby boy and he shared it. Um, Abby was lucky enough to have him as a basketball coach and he shared pictures of the baby boy. And if he approaches parenting like he did coaching those eighth grade girls' basketball, he'll have no issues there. And then the last thing I wanted to, um, share is, um, Larissa Bailey and Cassidy Peterson, who are, um, tech coaches. They have a YouTube channel called Larissa and Cassidy in the Valley. Um, and they use that channel to kind of highlight some of the things that they've been sharing with the district as far as technology and how it supports the curriculum and our students. And not only is that information great, but they are so entertaining. And so I just wanted to share that with everyone. Um, I suggest, I recommend going and liking that YouTube channel. It'll give you some good information about what's going on in the district as far as technology goes. But also, um, Cassidy Peterson has a Facebook page called PV Sec Tech. Um, and he has what I call tricks. Um, some people might think it's, um, they may have that knowledge, but for someone that is maybe not as good at Google Docs and Google Forms, he has all sorts of neat information about how you can use those, um, at home to kind of help your students, um, with their organization of materials and things of that nature. And so, um, I just want to thank them for the extra work that they're kind of doing and taking a job, but really making it their own. Um, it's amazing to see. So thank you to them.
Nice. Thank you. Um, Mr. Zimmer?
We've got a few things.
All right.
So, first of all, uh, in the area of athletics, I want to say congratulations to Pleasant Valley High School Athletic Director, Ms. Deanne Kramer, who was selected as the Iowa Girls Coaches Association Athletic Director of the Year. She submitted her application and was selected as one of the eight national finalists from across the country for the two thousand twenty-two National High School Athletic Coaches Association Athletic Director of the Year. So we'll stay tuned on how that goes. Um, also, uh, Mr. Ryan Arnold is our, uh, strength and conditioning coach. He was selected as the National High School Strength, uh, Coaches Association Region Six Iowa State Coach of the Year. And Region Six includes Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Kansas, Minnesota, and Iowa. So again, very appreciative of that. In volleyball, we were also made aware that Pleasant Valley High School Senior, Ms. Cora Ruff, was named as Gatorade Iowa Volleyball Player of the Year. And Cora directed her one thousand dollar grant award to the athletes against anxiety and depression as part of Gatorade's Play It Forward initiative. So very impressive. In the area of publications, um, each year, the school newspapers online called S N O, Snow, offers student journalism programs with outstanding online publications, the opportunity to, to apply to become an S N O distinguished site. This month, the staff of Pleasant Valley High School's publication, The Spartan Shield, earned the two thousand twenty-two S N O distinguished site for the fourth year in a row. Before being awarded the title of the S N O distinguished site, The Spartan Shield earned online digital badges in the areas of site excellence, story page design, writing, multimedia, uh, coverage, and audience engagement. The S N O started with the S N O distinguished sites program to eliminate ambiguity and delineate standards of excellence for an online student news site. Last year, sixty-seven schools in the entire country earned all the badges and the honor of becoming an S N O distinguished site. So again, congratulations to Maureen Dyer and the students in the publications class. Also, I was kind of waiting if you wanted to, Director Kunkel, on the robotics, but I wanted to mention that congratulations to the Pleasant Valley students who participated in the F T C super qualifier. Pleasant Valley High School team, Everything That's Radical, is headed to state along with four P V neighborhood teams, the Robo Minions, Winter Soldiers, Everything That's Radical, and Flourish and Box. In speech and drama, um, nine events participated, eight earning Division One. All state honors go to the one-act play Tripples, directed by Harper Clark, assistant direction and stage manager by Madison Cox. And actors were Grace Engstrom, Kira Bowman, Cooper Swire, uh, Ryan Snodgrass, and Josh Nelson. Also winning all state honors for group musical theater, the trio performing I've Decided to Marry You from A Gentleman's Guide to Love and Murder, Leah Mendlin, Carolyn Cirque, and Zach Guest. In choir, twenty-three high school choir students auditioned and were selected to attend the Midwest A C D A, a ten-state region of the American Choral Directors Association. Every other year, they have a conference alternating with a national conference on the opposite year. This year, we have high school students in the treble choir, grades seven through nine, and the mixed high school choir, grades ten through twelve. In band, ten Pleasant Valley High School members participated and were selected in the University of Northern Iowa Honors Band over this last weekend. Truana Jibola, Caleb Brand, Rebecca Ahm, Erica Holmberg, Arch Menazar, Catherine Moore, Dean Neer, Jemlec Perk, Tanya Rostalgie, and Landon Weiss. And then finally, the Iowa High School Ethics State Champions. We have that this year. Uh, Dr. Lynn Lundberg started a new Pleasant Valley activity this year and connected the curriculum and A P English Language Composition on using ethical reasoning to support arguments about controversial issues. Virtually sponsored by Iowa State University, Pleasant Valley High School entered two teams who competed for the Iowa Ethics Bowl held remotely last Friday. It was a tough competition and one of the P V teams went undefeated in the first three rounds. In the final deciding round, the two teams, P V Two and Ames, tied, but P V was declared the winner based on points in that round as well as points throughout the day's competition. The students on the winning team were Gretchen Heiburger, Nirmal Ala, Leila Sade, Elena Tulu, and Aga Sudruhendra. Uh, other students who competed and are eligible substitutes to compete are Josh Thomas, Megan McKnight, uh, Shabani Iyer, Arush Kachur, uh, Kushi Meridi, uh, Isaiah Pilak, Pasan Adala, uh, Tejya Kantur, and Luke Thompson. All the two, all the students practiced and honed arguments together, so it was definitely a, a team victory. P V now advances to the regional competitions with the hope of making it to nationals held at the University of North Carolina.
Wow.
So that's the summary of what's been going on in the fall season, so to speak.
Obviously, a lot of things. Thank you, Ms. Brockman, for pinching for me till I got here. Um, going on, um, Mr. Hungness, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Dr. Lewis, not here today? Okay. Uh, Ms. Damon, do you have anything?
I have the same one, thank you.
Mr. Struce?
I just want to say thank you to this year, we, or this, at the end of the school year, we have Cal Klopp, who's been a high school special education aide for seventeen years for us at Pleasant Valley. We're gonna miss him. Prior to, uh, retiring now with us, he was actually an aeronautical engineer, was his previous job. When we retired from that position, he joined on with us for seventeen years. As an amazing, kind man in, in a special education realm. So we will miss Cal Klopp, but just wanted to mention and thank him this evening.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, do we have anything from the audience? If you would like to address the non-agenda item, this would be your opportunity to do so. Uh, remember, because it is a non-agenda item, we really can't comment on it, but we are definitely hearing you. And if you could try and, um, um, maintain confidentiality, it would just be, we would prefer that if possible. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? And you have three minutes. Go ahead. And please state your name and your capacity within the district.
My name's Ben Nicol. I'm a proud girl dad of two, uh, girls at Riverdale Heights. Nice job up there. Um, real quick, I just wanted to make, I'm sure you're probably aware, but bus twenty-two, um, has been late, um, every, almost every day since December nineteenth. Uh, I understand it's a logistical nightmare and, uh, I did exchange in a couple of kind emails between the director of, over there too, but I, I just don't know if there's any way to mix it up. I just feel like it's a little unfair that all the kids on that one bus are, have to be late every, every day, twenty, sometimes thirty minutes late. I don't know if there's any kids on that bus that, uh, have missed breakfast because of that. I know that there's a breakfast program at school. So, I don't know, just something I wanted to bring to the attention and see if there was, I, again, logistical, I don't know if anybody in here knows how to drive the school bus, but, um, just wanted to bring that up and, and let you know my concerns with that, so.
Yeah, um, and Mr. Struce, let you respond. So go ahead, Mr. Struce.
Yeah, Mr. Nicol, I'll meet with them. I'll meet with them tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. It's my weekly meeting, so I'll follow up. I guarantee you that. Um, just to let you know, we had had some drivers out on Friday. We had two, we actually, four drivers from Waterloo, because Waterloo did not have school. So they came down. One driver drove, one driver did directional navigation. And then today, we had two drivers from Ankeny come down and drive sub-drive for us as well. We hope tomorrow that we'll be back with the people that were missing, but I know the Riverdale Heights bus has been off and on and not very, on, close to even being on schedule. So I'll follow up tomorrow morning.
They essentially just changed our pickup time to eight twenty-five and if they're there at eight twenty-five, and it still doesn't get, get them there on time. So. I manage sales teams. I don't do logistics, so I'm sure it's a nightmare, but.
Yeah, we'll follow. And if a kid is, as soon as late, we do have breakfast for them, so they still get that piece. We don't make sure we don't miss that. So.
Okay.
But I'll follow up for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for bringing that to your attention. All right. Um, are there any questions on this evening's, is there anybody else here who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay. And we will go on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we will go through approval of bills. Uh, general fund?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, elementary junior high activity fund?
I move the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High school activity fund?
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in payment of invoices presented.
The second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Brockman, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital projects fund?
I move that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three hundred dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the capital project funds warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pebble fund?
I move the Pebble fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the Pebble fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal service fund?
I move that internal service fund warrants sixty-three thirty-two through sixty-three thirty-nine be issued in the total amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Anderson, that the internal service fund warrants sixty-three thirty-two through sixty-three thirty-nine be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And trust fund?
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five thousand, ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Uh, Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next order of business is all business, Pleasantville Elementary driveway bids. Mr. Struce, Mr. Hungness Smith, and Leland.
We've had a little introduction since our last board meeting, which was January twenty-fourth. Uh, we had our bid opening on last Thursday, the tenth, um, for that project. As you recall, we met last time I Meg was present. We talked about having, uh, redoing the driveway from Crow Creek all the way back to where the brakes off and goes into the first parking lot, having that being resurfaced. We also talked about adding the stacking lane on the south side of that driveway, um, and what that would look like. After our last board meeting, when we met with I Meg, we went ahead and what we did is we, for the bid, when we met with the, the contractors for this project at the bid review, we actually divided it out into a, a lump sum in the beginning, and then we also had an alternate bid. So the original bid was just to do the, uh, the asphalt work from Crow Creek in the parking lot, the driveway in the parking lot. And we asked them to do an alternate bid for the stacking area to see what that would actually cost us as a separate project. Therefore, if it was too much money, uh, or would cause the project to go up too high for what we wanted to spend, then we would just leave that as an alternate off. We would not accept it. On the screen, what you see right now are the, um, six companies that bid on the project on Thursday, the tenth. And as you look through those, you'll see, you can see the first, in the middle column, where the actual price of the resurfacing of the driveway. where the actual price of the resurfacing of the driveway in the parking lot and what that would entail. Then you see the alternate in column number two, and that is the price then for that stacking lane area, and then column three is gonna be the total project bid. As you go through those, you'll see that CDMI is the lowest bid on the, first of all, in column one, they are the lowest. On the alternate bid, they were $1,770.00 above the lowest bid, which was in that case, for the alternate was Valley Construction, and the overall, then they were the lowest at $305,878.00. So that is the price there. When IMEG was here originally, we were anticipating the cost to be right around $424,000. So we were very pleased that this bid came in about $120,000 less than what we had anticipated. So we were very excited to see that. CDMI is actually the company that did our work at Forest Grove and received the award for their work there from the state. So we're very pleased with what came back there. Following this meeting, just to make sure we're covering all the bases of questions that we had had previously, last Friday, we also met with the city chief of police from Bettendorf, city administrator, economic developer, city engineer, and then Leland, Mike, and myself all met, and we talked about long-term planning, what options could be in the future as well, and what this could look like. So for example, let's call this phase one with the stacking lane to see what impact that has. If people start riding the bus next year, if we get back to that, is that stacking lane enough? Should that stacking lane not be enough, we talked to the city about what other options would we have? One thing we talked about was, could you put a turn lane on Crow Creek into Pleasant View? You know, in front of the three homes that would sit between Stagecoach and the parking lot. The city struggled with that a little because you have three driveways that would go.
You mean Shadowbrook?
Sorry, Shadowbrook into our turn there. Just some real questions, because you have three people's driveways right there, making a left out of their driveway could be difficult, so they worried about safety there. After about an hour and a half-long conversation, probably the biggest thing we'd come back with would be, in the future, if we need more space, we could potentially take our softball field that sits there, and let's say we move it 50 yards to the south towards the school, so it's still kind of that same area. That would allow us to, in the future, look at taking down that retaining wall, and, which is quite large, and you could grade that down to the sidewalk, so you wouldn't have to have the retaining wall anymore. And we could potentially add a fourth lane. So you'd have two lanes coming in, stacking, the third one would be a straight drive-through, and one would be an exit. So those are all things that we have talked about, future, to see what this would happen, what this would look like. What caused that meeting to set up was just, we didn't know what bids were gonna come in at on Thursday, so we wanted to make sure we had a good conversation with, once bids were in, to say, okay, what does this look like? What are our options? How do we phase it out? With our bid prices right now, we feel very good, that stacking lane being, you know, roughly $40,000 to put that in there. I think it's well worth that investment to put that in in phase one, to encourage families to continue to ride the bus, to get back on the bus, to reduce our traffic in there, and see what that does for us and what our options can be in the future. But we talked about additional parking lots in different locations, the cost of that, losing green space. We talked about, you know, is there other entrances we can go in and out of the building? There is just a lot of things, and this seems to be, right now, best phase one option with a phase two if we need to in the future. And if we do that, is there possible partnerships with the city, grants with the ball fields, things like that? So that is where we landed with that conversation, but I don't know, if you have any questions for Leland, myself, or Mike in regards to the project, you're more than willing to ask those at this time, too.
Mr. Struce, I think it was 50 feet you'd said.
Thank you, 50 feet from moving, moving the ball field, 50 feet. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Sorry. Mr. Zimmer had mentioned, like, our, having a sign on Crow Creek saying that, you know, you can't stop on Crow Creek.
Correct.
So essentially, if you come up and you cannot pull in, you need to circle around. Would that sign be something we could put up, or that have to be the city, because it's, you know, not our property out there?
So currently, if you drive on Crow Creek and you're in that Shadowbrook area, there are signs up there that have the speed limit, but also say no parking on Crow Creek. Like, so we looked at that, they're already there.
Okay.
Yeah, so just be enforcing that and making sure we're continuing to have people come in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Does that be enforced by the city?
I mean, right now, we, I have not been there, so I can't speak to it, but right now, it's trying to get them down to the church so they're not parking on it. You know, we do have people parking in Shadowbrook, and once the stacking lane would be in place, we'd be seeing, what would that look like? And do we still have to monitor it? Right now, we moved our custodians out there, so Mike's not out there. That's something we have to continue to watch. We're enforcing it right now. What does the future hold? I can't tell you that for sure. But hopefully, we can eliminate that, so no one is parking out there, without having to use the church in the future also.
Other questions from the board?
I just had one question. So if we think back to pre-COVID days, when more students rode the bus, I know it's always been a problem at Pleasant View with traffic in the afternoon, but has it been, is it typically as bad as it has been the last couple of years, or has it always been this bad and we just, I don't know if that's a fair question?
So I'll start with Pleasant View. I'll start with that answer first.
Yes.
There's always been traffic out there. Now, whether it was on Crow Creek, or they'd park in Shadowbrook, and you talk to Steven, and he'll say, you know, years ago, there was that conversation back then about cars being in Shadowbrook.
Oh, yeah.
When we talk to the city, I mean, it's, you know, pre-COVID, COVID, there's always been cars that line up. I think there's more now, since we've had that. So it's getting back to where we were, whether that's a comfort level, or people just drive their kids more frequently now. But when talking to the city, the chief of police, he said, go over by Hoover Elementary or some of the other schools in Bettendorf, you see the same issue where there's cars parked, and it's just, there's no good solution a lot of times, but, so we're trying to, how do we mitigate this and what can we do?
Yeah.
But we've gotta get back to more riding the bus.
Right.
But again, when busing struggles, more people are gonna drive their kids, too. So I totally get that part of it.
Other questions from the board? I had one. So you had mentioned this would be phase one, and then if we need to, we could look at this phase two, which were the possibilities you mentioned. What would trigger going from phase one to phase two? What in your mind, or what do you think, what would you wanna look at to say, okay, we need to go to the phase two option?
If we're still having to use the church, or, you know, other things just aren't working, and we're still having cars backing up, that was what would cause it?
Okay.
To look at and see what options are, and get partnered with the city. If you want, Jeff was part of that meeting as well, so I can even let him speak if you'd like.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So Brian is doing a very good job here of being respectful to our conversation, so thank you very much. I think to that point as well, I think your approach to this is probably very sound. See how phase one goes, and if it does solve that problem, by the end of that phase one, if busing comes back and it's strong, and you find that phase two may not be as necessary, that's great. So I think the trigger would be, what does it look like after phase one? One item of note as well, and again, Mr. Struce was being very, very polite, our city manager, Dr. Plain, did suggest that the city would be willing to participate in a phase two if, in fact, it was warranted. You know, moving, I've known that ball field's been there for years, and it's something that, whether it's a neighborhood amenity, or whether it's something that's truly used every night by competitive ball teams, it's something that's necessary. So moving at 50 feet is something that we would wanna make sure that is intact. So if it was moved to the south, you know, Mr. Plain was accommodating and saying that we would be willing to participate and support that if it becomes a necessary maneuver. Taking phase two into account right now, with that retaining wall that's there, might be a big leap. So I think your approach is very conservative, but it's, at the same time, taking into account everything that's necessary. And to answer the question about enforcement, I think we could put some more no parking signs on there. One of the challenges that our police chief did face was, you know, there's a public perception if a police officer's out there citing parents every day under live traffic, that we're issuing tickets, or creating those violations and moving people along with this. That's just not a perception that we really wanna have, is that there's a city, a police officer sitting there every day just waiting to issue citations. So I think we wanna take the high road there a little bit, issue no parking signs, and if there's a way in which enforcement can happen without having to actually have a police officer in uniform ticketing mom or dad, we'd prefer to go that route first. So we'll continue to oblige, and that's not why I'm here tonight, so I'll sit back down now. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have an open agreement with the church to use that parking lot? Is that kind of an indefinite thing?
So right now, we have worked with them through the remainder of this school year. They charge us, we're paying $500.00 a month, and they'll bill us, basically from December through the rest of the school year, to allow us to use that. And really, where that came up was, we looked at, was it five years, or at least three to four years of bills that they were paying for snow removal? And we said, basically, we will pay for your snow removal this year, and if it's not that amount of money, we're still paying that $500.00 a month. That was kind of our thank you to them for allowing us to use that as a turnaround spot.
Ms. Brockman?
Brian, is there any opportunity for, like, a staggered release? I know my kids went to Pleasant View for, I was there for 12 years, and just actually the last two years have not been there, but I never remember waiting on Crow Creek Road to turn in.
Yeah.
So I gotta, I have to believe that this is more of an issue recently than, you know, anything, but.
We have talked about a staggered start, or a release. Could that be an option? It could. Again, here's the barriers to that. What happens is, you can say, X people get released at 3 o'clock, X people get released at 3:15, but people still come early, or some might be late, and it ends up causing a backup, because, well, I'm here for 3:15, but I got a car behind that wants to leave at 3 o'clock. So it is a potential option. We've talked about it, but we've just said that's very difficult to manage, and look at any of our schools, when you look at, cars are always waiting early. So we were shying away from that option. Could be an option in the future, but this would be the first option. Yeah.
I just had one other question. Can you just refresh my memory on the timing? Is this a summertime project that we're doing this?
Yes, this would happen as soon as school is out.
Okay.
We get this project, and they will always leave one lane open, number one, for emergency personnel, and number two, for any of our employees that have to get in and out for cleaning purposes over summer cruise. So one lane will always be open, but the goal would be to have it completed, obviously, before school begins, but it'd be aggressive timeline.
Thank you.
Other questions? So when we do this, if we pass this phase one, in the summer, or I mean, when the weather gets better, it seems like there's usually less of an issue, correct? Or is that not the case?
It's been an issue most of the year. I mean, I really don't think, it's just all years been there.
Okay. So when phase one gets completed, we still have the option of using the church?
If we need to, yes.
If we need to.
Yes. I mean, again, how do we train people to ride the bus, do all those, but we would reach out to the church if we need to, yes.
But right now, we just have a contract with them through the end of the, through the end of the school year.
Correct.
And then we'll have to readdress it in the, in the fall, if there's an issue.
Yes.
Okay. Because we have a backup plan, at least a temporary backup plan, if there is still an issue.
Correct.
Until we get to a phase two.
Yes.
At which point, we will work with the city then to see what other options we have.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the audience? Please, and if you just want, if we have to have you come up to the podium now, and you get three minutes to address the board, and to state your name and your capacity within the district.
Fred Dodd, taxpayer. When you contracted with IMEG, well, you can ask a question, I guess, did they do a study on the number of cars? Did you actually go up there and observe, or would you just contracted to put a new circle up and make more space?
Anyway, so they actually were there on-site multiple days observing. I mean, they spent quite a bit of time with Mike to ask him a question.
Because last time, your man said that you had room for 65 cars with the new plane. Of course, 45 in the lineup is that, right, Mike, and then another 19 to 20 on the added lane.
Yes, I think those numbers are correct.
Yeah.
Unless the distance has been adjusted further in there.
They'll be at somewhere between 20 to 25 in the new stacking lane, because it's gonna go around the corner, and then you'd also have around another five or so cars that would be further ahead than we are right now. So, again, we're hoping for 25-ish, depending on how close cars park to each other.
Right.
Yes.
And then, that same night last, two weeks ago, I had done the count up there, and I came up with 107 cars needed to be on-site to clear up the problem. Today, I looked at it, and there were 51 in line, different today. There were only like 10 over at the church, and there were 14 at Shadow. So that was the lower number. But at, talking to Mr. Cotton, he says it's an unusual day, because it's party day, it's Valentine's Day, so there are more people up in the front, because the kids aren't riding the bus, because they have all this stuff to take home. Well, what made up the difference was that the, you know, the snow is off the grass, and where there's usually four or five cars there, there were 23 there today. And you look at that, and you think, well, could we use that space over there better if it were asphalt there, and it would be available all the time for that 20 or 25 extra cars? Then you've just about covered it all the time, because as Dr. Wogle says, in the spring and the fall, you get a lot of kids that are, and even today, the weather is nice, and the sidewalk is busy again, so there are a lot that weren't using buses or cars. It just seems like the, and with those costs being, coming in lower, that should look at maybe that other area, that grass area, and while we're doing this, use that as the the extra area to absorb on the high days. I can't imagine it would cost more than $25,000 extra to maybe bring a permanent solution. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anybody else on the, on the audience, any comments? Okay. If not, we do have a motion on the table. Or we have a motion.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we need to have a public hearing first. And so, and so I'm opening up for a public hearing on the Pleasant View Elementary driveway bid. Does anybody have any questions regarding it? Okay. Then, should I go out of the, and now I'll take a motion for approval then, for the bid, if somebody wants to do that. At least, like, we've said, we have at least this initial phase one, and then there will be a phase two potentially, if there's still a problem. So with that, I will take a motion if the board feels that they wanna move forward with this.
I move the board to approve the low bid from CDMI Concrete Contractors for $305,087.80 for the Pleasant View Elementary driveway project.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board approve the low bid from CDMI Concrete Contractors Incorporated for $305,087.80 for the Pleasant View Elementary driveway project. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. A, Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wogley?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to the new business, we have the first reading of Board Policy Series 200. And on your desk, you will also see a colored copy of this as well. And so this is the first reading of Board Policy 200. Mr. Srees?
So in the board supplemental materials, are all the changes we're looking at for the Board 200 series, this will be the first reading that we have. And really, tonight, just kind of organizing your thoughts around this, so you, next couple weeks, you can read this, the changes that we're looking at. Again, this is working through IASB, and what their recommendations are for new policy changes. When you go through and you look at the booklet, that's, the reason you have a book is just easier to read it when you can turn through versus trying to scroll through all the pages online, but they are there. When you look at the areas, here's how I kind of classify it. You have the organizational of the board, so you look at some of those things, which would be, for example, our elections, qualifications for each of you, terms, and say vacancies. Those documents are all listed there. If it's in red, those are the suggestions from IASB of the changes that we should make to our policies. The second section of that, of those policies would be specific duties of the board. And again, that's roles, code of ethics, in those different topics. The third section really has to do with the procedures or the policy adoptions, and how we go through and adopt policies, such as what we're doing right now at this time. And remember, this is through, what we're doing right now is the overall policy review of all of our policies over the next few meetings to get through them, and then we go on a five-year cycle where we review two series every single year. So 100, 200 series, the next year, two, or three, and four, and so forth. So we're doing the whole book review at this time. The other part would be school board meetings. You know, what does it look like for a regular meeting, expectations, special meetings, public participation, our agenda makeup, what's involved there, rules of order, and so forth. And then the last one is kind of miscellaneous, which is membership, that you guys are part of, training, and then any expenses that you might occur, such as at a training and so forth, and what that looks like. So again, there have been a few policy changes with last legislative session that would be identified in these policies too. But please begin reading through those, and let me know if you have any questions at any point, but all of them are there. You can look at online, and our original 200 series will still be online until we approve this entire series. Then we'll put 200 back up at that point with all the changes. But the next three board meetings, the next one will take questions, and the third one, we would approve the series at that time if we're ready to do so. So tonight, just an introductory to that section.
Anybody have any questions?
It was nice that IASB let us keep like one paragraph of our policy. There are so many changes.
Yes, there are. And so we'll go through those, read through those, and see what they are. A lot of times, there's not a lot of changes. A lot of times, it has to do with the legal references on the bottom as well, might, legal updates might be there, their policy reviews. Sometimes it was just easier because of, just to take their whole policy versus trying to adjust our policy to fit their suggestions. That's why you might see an entire policy being read.
And of course, if there's any spelling errors or grammatic errors, please let Deb know as well because she would like that as well. So this is the first reading, and we will take questions at the next meeting regarding this. So there's no motion on that. The next order is fiscal year 2022-2023 property tax levy rate discussion. Mr. Kingy Smith?
All right. Tonight begins the discussions on where we want to set the district's property tax levy rate for the upcoming 2022-23 fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th of each year. So this would be the fiscal year starting July 1st, '22 through June 30th of 2023. There is no need for the boards to make a motion tonight or a final decision tonight. We will be discussing this again at the next board meeting, the February 28th board meeting. At that board meeting, we would need the board to come to consensus. You wouldn't actually make a motion, but we would need the board to come to consensus at the February 28th board meeting on what we want to do with next year's levy rate in order to give our staff accountant time to complete all of the certified budget paperwork, the aid and levy, and all of those things in a timely manner to be able to officially adopt the budget at our April 11th board meeting. The other thing we would do at our March 21st board meeting is when we would set the public hearing date, which the public hearing would be at that April 11th board meeting. So that's the, we would need a motion at the March 21st board meeting just to set the public hearing date for April 11th. And then on April 11th, we would hold the public hearing regarding the budget and officially make a motion to the, to adopt the budget, including the property tax levy rate for next year at the April 11th board meeting. And one of the, one of the reasons that we wouldn't want to finalize things tonight also is because the governor, and the governor recommended 2.5% for SSA supplemental state aid, but the legislature has not approved that yet. There's, I believe, a couple different levels of SSA being discussed, but nothing has been finalized yet. We're hoping that will happen soon, as I believe, wasn't this past Friday technically the 30-day limit for when they were supposed to set SSA, but that has not been done yet? So that's one reason that we wouldn't want to finalize things completely tonight, also as far as what we want to do with the levy rate. One of the things that we look at each year when we're setting the levy rate is what's called the residential rollback. The residential rollback is the percentage that is adjusted each year by the state of Iowa that determines what percentage of your taxable, or your assessed valuation of your house is subject to property tax. This year, the Iowa, the state of Iowa actually increased, excuse me, decreased the residential rollback by over two, a little bit over two percentage points. The residential rollback percentage decreased from 56.4094% a year ago to 54.1302% for the upcoming year. So like I say, just a little bit over a 2% decrease in the residential rollback. That is the opposite of the situation we were in when we looked at this a year ago. When we looked at this a year ago, the residential rollback increased by about 1.5%. It increased a year ago from 55.0743% up to 56.4094%. So that meant that a higher percentage of your assessed valuation of your home was subject to property tax. This year, again, it's the opposite way, where a lower percentage of your assessed valuation of your home will be subject to property tax. I did some calculations, and what that means is, for next year, technically, the district would have the ability to raise the property tax levy rate by 59 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation, and if your assessed valuation on your home did not change from the previous year, you would not be paying more in school district property taxes, even though the district raised the levy rate by 59 cents. A year ago, again, we were in an opposite situation where we would have had to lower the district's property tax levy rate by 33 cents in order to make it a situation where if your assessed valuation had not changed from the previous year, you would not pay any more in school district property taxes. You may recall, a year ago, what we actually did, ended up doing, is we lowered the district's property tax levy rate by 2 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. We were not able to lower it, that 33 cents that it would have been necessary to lower it to make it not feel like a property tax increase, because with Forest Grove opening up this school year, we needed those additional funds to help with the funding for opening up Forest Grove Elementary School. Also, our solvency ratio, we've been working a number of years on trying to improve the district's solvency ratio. Ever since that year of the across-the-board state budget cuts back in the 2010-11 fiscal year, we've set a goal to increase our solvency ratio each year to be able to withstand, if there is another state across-the-board budget cut at some point in the future. So those were a couple of the reasons last year why we ended up lowering the levy rate by 2 cents per thousand taxable valuation, even though we would have needed to lower it by 33 cents for it because of the residential rollback to make it not feel like a property tax increase. So our current year property tax levy rate rounded to the nearest dollar is $13.76 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. What we are recommending currently tonight is going to be to lower the levy rate for next year by 30 cents. So a 30-cent decrease in the district's overall property tax levy rate, which would drop it from the current $13.76 down to $13.46 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. Here is what is causing us to make that recommendation. In our general fund in the district, when you, when you take a look at the calculations for the aid and levy, which is based on the school foundation formula, this year, we are limited on how much we can levy for what's called our cash reserve levy. And the reason for that is because we had an increase during the 2020-21 fiscal year in our district's overall cash balance. Because of that increase in our cash balance, we have hit the point where we are limited more than we have been in the past on how much we can levy for cash reserve. We are not in the situation that the Bettendorf School District is in, and the North Scott School District is in. They are in the situation where they can levy $0 for cash reserve because their cash balance exceeds 20% of their expenditures from the prior fiscal year. So they cannot levy anything for cash reserve. We are still able to levy something for cash reserve. That amount actually is $1,113,694 that we are allowed to levy. That's the maximum amount that we can levy for cash reserve for next year. That is a smaller amount than we have been levying the last few years, though, for cash reserve. And again, the reason it is a smaller amount is because of the increase in our cash balance. By levying that $1,113,694 for next year in cash reserve in our general fund, we would be able to cover the amount of our special ed deficit that we had for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Our special ed deficit for that year was $767,750. So we would levy to cover the special ed deficit. We would be able to cover our deficits that we had in ELL, the English Language Learner deficit. We, there's two different components to the ELL deficit. One of those deficits was $7,877, and the other was about $68,000. So we would be able to cover those deficits. But the big deficit, not deficit, the big amount of spending authority that we get that we would not be able to cover all of for next year, that we normally are able to cover with the, with the cash reserve levy, is our on-time funding. On-time funding, we get because of our increase in enrollment in the school district. So for the, the current fiscal year, the 2021-2 fiscal year, we were granted $1,315,002 in what's called on-time funding, which equates to spending authority, additional spending authority that we can spend in our general fund. However, because of this limit on our cash reserve levy, this year anyway, we would, or next year, I should say, we would only be able to cover $241,099 of that $1,315,002 in on-time funding. So in order to recover the rest of that $1,315,002 in on-time funding, we would have to recover that in future years when we're adjusting the levy rate, is how that would work. So what we are recommending then is, well, because of that, because we're limited on how much we can levy in cash reserve in the general fund, our general fund levy for next year would actually go down by about 90 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation. But you recall earlier, I said what we're recommending for next year is that we lower our district levy rate by 30 cents per thousand of taxable valuation. So there's a 60-cent difference there. And what we're recommending is that we increase our, our management fund levy by 60 cents for next year. So the net of increasing our management fund levy by 60 cents, and the general fund levy lowering by 90 cents, the net of that would be the 30-cent decrease that we're recommending for next year for the property tax levy rate. Now, the district's management fund, what that is used for is, the majority of the expenditures in the management fund go to two different areas. One of them is for the district's property and liability insurance. The other big portion that is spent out of the management fund is for the district's early retirement benefits that we pay out to retirees. We have long had the goal here in the district of trying to get our management fund levy up to a balance that would cover five years' worth of expenditures in the management fund. Currently, in the management fund, we are, have enough in our management fund to cover about 2.7 years' worth of expenditures in the management fund. If we were to levy an additional 60 cents for next year in our management fund, that would bring that 2.71 years up to 4.24 years for the balance that would be covered. We would have enough in our management fund balance to cover 4.24 years of expenditures, projected expenditures in the management fund. So that would get us closer to our goal that we've had of trying to be able to levy, have enough to cover five years' worth of expenditures in the management fund. This would be a one-year thing, we project. What happened, we, like I said, our, our cash balance went up in the general fund this last fiscal year. The main reasons for our general fund cash balance going up this last fiscal year were we received money from the federal government, passed through the state government, for COVID-19 relief, the ESER funds that we received. We had not spent all of those funds as of June 30th, 2021. We still had about $600,000 of ESER funds sitting in our cash balances at June 30th, 2021, that we had not spent yet. So that is one of the reasons for the increase in our cash balance for the last fiscal year. The other reason, main reason for the increase is, we did have some savings last fiscal year due to COVID for things such as, for example, travel. Our travel expenditures were down quite a bit last year. We did not have teachers and other employees in the district going to professional development and conferences. That was pretty much cut out most of last year. Also, our transportation budget, for example, we did not have field trips happening last year. Activities were cut down quite a bit during last fiscal year, so we saved some money also on field trips and activities, transportation costs related to those things. Those are a couple of examples of why our cash balance went up last fiscal year. We are projecting our cash balance to go down, back down to a level similar to what it was pre-COVID after this fiscal year, because we're going to spend down the rest of that money that we received from COVID relief. Things are returning more back to normal as far as field trips happening. Transportation budget will be, we'll be spending more out of that this year because of activities happening and those types of things. And the other big issue is, we opened up Forest Grove Elementary School this year, so we do expect that also to be a factor in our cash balance going down for the fiscal year that we're in currently. So we believe next year, when we're looking at this a year from now, we believe we will be back in the situation where we will be able to levy more for cash reserve than we can for next fiscal year, and not have to, not need, since we will have raised our management fund up from 2.71 years of coverage to 4.24 years of coverage, we believe we'll be able to take that 60 cents that we're shifting from the general fund into management fund for next year and put it back in general fund next year. So the effect is, rather than, you know, possibly lowering our levy rate by as much as 90 cents this year, and then having to raise it 90 cents next year, this will kind of balance the two years out, and hopefully, we won't have a big jump down one way and up one way the next year is what our plan is. So that is the reason for our recommendation of the 30-cent decrease in the property tax levy rate. Just a couple other things I wanted to share with you real quick. Solvency ratio, I mentioned earlier, that is one of the big things that we look at when we're setting the property tax levy rate. IASB, the Iowa Association of School Boards, recommends that your solvency ratio be somewhere between 5 and 15%. It can be as high as, well, it actually can go above 20%, but if your solvency ratio gets above 20%, that's when you're in the situation that Bettendorf and North Scott School Districts are in, where they cannot levy anything for cash reserve levy in their general fund. At the end of the last fiscal year, our solvency ratio did actually go up slightly above the IASB recommended amount, as we ended the last fiscal year with a solvency ratio of 17.78%, so a little bit above that recommended 15%. Again, that was because of those savings that we had in the general fund and the additional revenue that we had in the general fund from the COVID-19 relief money. But if you compare us to Bettendorf and North Scott, Bettendorf's solvency ratio at the end of last fiscal year was 21.30%, and North Scott's solvency ratio was 22.8%. So we're still about five percentage points below North Scott and Bettendorf in solvency ratio. The one, last thing I'm going to share with you is, I calculated for three different levels of homes in the PV School District, what, how much less they would what, how much less they would be paying in property tax, school property taxes if we were to lower the property tax levy rate by the recommended thirty cents per thousand of taxable valuation. So the first level of assessed valuation home I looked at is one that has an assessed valuation of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. If the assessed valuation on your home was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, you would pay seventy-seven dollars less next year in school property taxes. So if you take that seventy-seven dollars divided by twelve, I should be able to probably do this in my head since I'm an accountant. Seventy-seven, whoops, divided by twelve, that would be about six dollars and forty-two cents less per month that you would be paying next year in school district property taxes if you have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar assessed valuation home. If you have a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar assessed valuation home, if we were to lower the district levy rate by thirty cents, you would pay one hundred and seventy-seven dollars less in property taxes, school property taxes for next year.
Fourteen seventy-five.
All right, Brian's got it there. And if you had a five hundred thousand dollar home in the assessed valuation home in the PV School District, if we did a thirty cent decrease in the levy, you would pay two hundred and thirty-six dollars less next year in school property taxes or nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents less per month in school district property taxes if we were to do this recommended thirty cent decrease in the overall property tax levy rate. So that's everything I have to present to you tonight. Again, we don't have a motion or need to make a final decision tonight. But I'd take any questions, if anybody has any questions at this time. Otherwise, this will be on the agenda again for the February twenty-eighth board meeting.
Questions for the board?
I just have an observation that I think I understand now why we have four-year terms, because it's taken me like six years to understand this thoroughly. I mean, I understand it each year, but it still is just a lot to take in. So thank you for your detailed explanations, because it does make it easier for people like us who don't deal with school finance to understand what you're telling us.
It is complicated, I know. It took me a couple of years to learn it myself when I first started at PV, twenty-two years ago, so.
So depending upon what is decided by the legislature on the state supplemental aid, if that number, let's say, is a maximum number going to be two and a half? It could be less than that? So if it goes less than that, then what would you want to do with the levy rate?
Well, we would need to do the calculations again, but I believe if it went less than two and a half percent, I believe actually that would possibly let us lower it even a little bit more, because the higher they set SSA at, the more pressure that actually puts on the levy rate for us. So if they lowered SSA, or, you know, made it lower than the two and a half percent, that would give us a little bit more flexibility on where to set our overall levy rate at. But I would need to do the calculations again. And if they do set it at something different than two and a half percent, we will definitely update you at the next board meeting.
And part of the goal is, when you look at your calculations, is to try and reduce the deficit of the special, of the special ed as well? That's one of the goals, or, and then also of the ELL?
Yeah, we've already got the special ed deficit and the ELL deficit covered. We just would like to be able to cover more of that on-time funding. Because what happens is, we have more unspent spending authority at the end of each year than we have cash in the bank. So our spending authority is kind of like your credit card limit. It's the maximum amount you're allowed to spend. So we have, we could, the state would allow us to spend more money, but we wouldn't have the cash to back it up. And so we've been trying to narrow that gap over the years between how much spending authority we have and how much cash in the bank we have. The other thing we can look at normally is what other school districts in the area and cities in the area are doing. And I know I talked to Bettendorf's school business official and North Scott School Business Official at an IASMO meeting last week at the AEA, and they had not gotten to that point yet where they had determined what they were going to do with their levy rate. I haven't heard from the city of Leclerc. Bettendorf's here, I don't know if you.
Fifteen cents.
Okay, they're going to lower theirs by fifteen cents, it sounds like, so. Hopefully, we'll have more information by the February twenty-eighth board meeting also on what the other school districts are doing in the area, in the city of Leclerc.
As Mike mentioned earlier, one of the biggest things we're trying to watch is always, you know, with the rollback, what's going to happen each year. The last thing I want to do is have tax rates going up and down all the time. People wondering what's happened. So try to keep it as consistent as possible and try to be wise towards the tax money. So we feel like this thirty cents is a good number to put us where we need to be and to honor everybody.
Makes sense. Okay, there is no motion on that. And then we'll move on to our final topic, which is the I-80 Urban Renewal Plan. Mr. Struce and our guests from Bettendorf.
Yeah, so at this time, I would like to welcome Jeff Rider, City of Bettendorf Economic Development Director, and also Jason Shad is here from City. He's the Finance Director. And they're here to talk about the I-80 Renewal Project, which we did back in two thousand seventeen, which is the area where TBK Sports would be. And this amendment we're going to talk about tonight has to do with the area east of Middle Road, north of Forest Grove, so kind of by where our school is located, just to the west of our school. So want to let them kind of speak about, they just spoke at the city meeting here shortly. So we'll let them follow up, and we'll talk about what impact this has for that area, for our district, and what this looks like moving forward. So Jeff.
Yeah, Mr. Struce, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time. Again, my name's Jeff Rider, Economic Development Director for the city. Proud dad of a recent graduate of Pleasant Valley High School, your third baseman on your state champion baseball team. And also a very social freshman at Pleasant Valley High School. So I'm with my friend here, Jason Shat. Jason is our Finance Director, and he will hold me up throughout my presentation. I will talk about what we're doing. And I don't think what we're doing here is necessarily the question as much as how we're getting there and what is the end result going to be. The urban renewal plan in two thousand seventeen was updated for the corridor of Forest Grove, Middle Road, Interstate eighty. We had an urban renewal plan in place prior to that, but it had expired. And by state code, we have to update that in order to support an economic development project. In this case, in two thousand seventeen, our economic development project was the TBK Bank Sports Complex and the surrounding corridor there. When the state issued a code revision in two thousand twelve, I believe it was, if you are an agricultural property landowner within an urban renewal area, you are required to consent to being in that area. So in two thousand seventeen, whenever we did this revision, there's roughly nine hundred acres in total of the entire area. But when we did that, there were a couple farms in that area that chose not to consent. It really has no tax bearing on you. It really has no impact until such time when you wish to take some sort of action, sell your property, do something with the property, et cetera. But there were a couple of folks that chose not to consent. Coincidentally, there is now plans for an agreement and a project east of Middle Road, north of Forest Grove. And one of those former areas that did not consent is seeing a benefit to now consenting to being in this area for the sake of a commercial development moving forward. That is one of the things that triggered our need to amend and update our urban renewal plan. So, short story long, we come to you, much like we did in two thousand seventeen, with an urban renewal plan update. At that time, Forest Grove School was agricultural land owned by the Pleasant Valley School District. There was no school there. The Pleasant Valley School Board at the time chose to consent because what that did was give us the opportunity as a city to also help support that project through mutual pickleball courts, mutual tennis courts, access, et cetera, for infrastructure. So it was a mutually beneficial opportunity to where we could help support some of those amenities that you see at Forest Grove Elementary today. So the school district did consent at that time. So why are we doing this? How are we doing it? On January eighteenth, we held, we set a public hearing for our urban renewal plan update. Then on January twenty-fifth, I believe it was, January twenty-fifth, we had a consultation with Mr. Struce. And then following up that afternoon with the Scott County Board of Supervisors as well, we consulted the taxing entities, told them what we're going through here and what we're doing. This is all being done in contemplation of a commercial development east of Middle Road. So then in response to that, we had set that public hearing, actually, for the urban renewal update for tomorrow night at our city council meeting, at which time we anticipate they will adopt this update to our urban renewal plan. So this urban renewal plan update is supporting a development agreement that we've crafted with the investors, Forest Grove and AD Holdings and Middle and Forest Grove LLC. They wish to essentially expand the sports complex east of Middle Road on roughly a hundred acres. This will be in the newspaper tomorrow. We just learned that it's already online, because we just came from giving a presentation to our city council, and the media was really excited to get it pushed out. So what this means is, the city of Bettendorf is engaging in a development agreement with these developers to provide eight more youth turf baseball fields on two multipurpose pads of turf, a sixty-plus bay golf and entertainment destination over three decks. It'll all be announced Wednesday at a press conference you're all invited to with great pictures and visuals by the developer, but a golf entertainment venue. It'll also have another entertainment facility attached to it, an additional hotel, more commercial and retail amenities. So essentially doubling the size of the sports complex to the east side of Middle Road. We are also providing a pedestrian bridge over Middle Road as a city amenity. We feel it'll be a great safety tool, kind of an iconic feature as you come off of Interstate eighty to connect the two sides of the Middle Road. So we'll be constructing that in addition to all of our infrastructure that's planned. I know many of you that travel in the area know Forest Grove Road needs to be upgraded. I could go down that path as well. But it's now time to upgrade Forest Grove and Middle. We received STBG grants from the federal government back in two thousand fourteen, and it contemplated the improvements to Forest Grove and Middle Road coming this coming year. That was before the Betplex slash TBK was contemplated. It came at an expense of about six million dollars to the taxpayers if we would have expedited that. So we chose to stay true to our timeline, which means now is the time when Forest Grove can be improved through that corridor. So you'll see construction of roundabouts, construction of Forest Grove and Middle throughout it. This time next year, it's going to be pretty spectacular. So we're going to have a little bit of a pinch point this year, but we're going to get it done. Okay, so I'm going to talk some numbers now, and Jason is really going to hold me up on this. But what does this mean for Pleasant Valley? And why the heck are those guys from the city here, right? So the city is agreeing to an economic development opportunity and development agreement where we are going to provide a series of grant payments or TIF rebates to the developer. TIF is the big elephant in the room word that everybody questions how and why, and what does that look like, right? So when we did this update in two thousand seventeen, and as you see today with the TBK Bank Sports Complex, the question the board asked right away was, are you a Tiffin residential? Are you going to be giving TIF money to housing? We don't like that. We in Bettendorf don't like that either. We don't practice that at all. We feel that our housing market is incredibly strong. Why would we give TIF incentives to developers to construct more housing? We don't do it. And in fact, with this development agreement, we've specifically cited that any sort of housing, multi-residential, single-family, condos, anything, would not qualify for any sort of tax increment financing or TIF incentive. We don't believe it's going to happen, period, because they're doing such an awesome commercial development. But if in fact something were to happen, we're telling them, you're not getting any TIF money for housing. So I know that's a question, and obviously a bone of contention in a lot of factions. The second thing, how does this affect the school district? And why are these city guys here telling us what's going on? Okay, so the other item of note as well is, whenever TIF is calculated and suggested to developers, it is where does that money come from? How does that originate? So what we do is, we will set a base valuation on the property on January one of two thousand twenty-three. So talking a lot like Mr. Kling and Smith here, what we're going to do in January of twenty-three is we're going to set a base value on the property of whatever that commercial value is at the time. Today, it's zoned agricultural. The agricultural property owners pay tax amounts to the city, the county, and the schools. It will be zoned commercial, which will naturally increase the amount of taxes they pay, which is a good thing, and I'll go into that here in just a minute. On January one of two thousand twenty-three, whatever the value of the property is, he will continue to pay full freight taxes on that amount. Anything net above that amount on January one twenty-three for the next twenty years will be the TIF increment that he has the ability to capture back. So in this case, we're setting a valuation, a minimum assessed valuation on the entire area of thirty-two million dollars. We anticipate the base is probably going to be somewhere maybe around two million dollars at the time. So we'll capture full taxes on roughly that two million dollars. He will get his TIF rebate back based on the thirty-two million dollar valuation that is achieved there. We honestly think it's going to be north of that, but that's what we set as the minimum. Okay, so as far as what this looks like for the city, county, and the schools, I'm going to go right to the schools, because I respect all of your time, and here we go. So today on that property, as it's zoned agricultural, Pleasant Valley School District, it's roughly a hundred and nine acres, by the way, that Pleasant Valley School District captures about forty-five hundred and five dollars a year in property tax because it's zoned ag. Under this development agreement, with a substantially higher assessed value, which we know is going to be achieved, after the TIF rebate is awarded to the developer, Pleasant Valley Schools will collect an average of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars a year in annual PEPAL, ISPL, and debt service. So forty-five hundred annually today, you will be going to roughly ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars a year after we give him back his TIF money, quote unquote. What does that look like over the life of this development agreement? If no development were to occur there, you would receive roughly ninety thousand dollars in taxes over that twenty-year period. Under this agreement, you will receive one point nine million dollars and change. And again, I think that's, as a taxpayer to the district with students there, a lot of that money can go right back into capital, great projects. Who knows, Forest Grove School might need to expand in the next year or two, just guessing. But nonetheless, we feel that although we're giving a TIF incentive to the developer to create a regional awesome destination, his TIF money's not coming out of our pockets as taxpayers to this district. We're rebating back his property taxes, and the benefits seen to your school district will be one point nine million versus ninety thousand over twenty years. A similar equation comes out to play for the city of Bettendorf and the counties. We do capture debt service ourselves. In our case, we're actually going to capture debt service to put back into infrastructure to construct the project and other necessary improvements. Part of the roundabouts, part of the sewers, part of the streets. We're going to utilize our increment and our component pieces of this development to pay ourselves back for all of the incentives we're providing to the developer. Jason, what have I left out?
Couldn't have done it any better.
So as part of our municipal obligation, we have an opportunity to consult with the taxing entities. As part of our relationship with the Pleasant Valley School District, much like Scott County, we value that. This isn't necessary for us to be here, but we really value our relationship with the school. And we felt it kind of important to come here and kind of explain our situation. It's not easy to understand, but the big thing whenever we're talking about TIF, economic development incentives, is we're not giving away your money. We're not giving away taxpayers' money. It's increment generated above what's there today that they get to get back. And by doing that, there's obviously all of the other cool things that come with it, like sales tax generation, hotel motel tax generation, places for our kids and families to go, which is pretty darn cool. So this is kind of our statement to you tonight. We're happy to answer any questions. We expect that there will be a press conference Wednesday morning after our city council approves this agreement. And Mr. Struce, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Do you have any questions from the board?
May I? You mentioned other amenities. Will another amenity include a gas station?
It's likely. So what we're going to do is.
There's always a line.
So what we are going to do is, we're going to go through a series of site plans after this is done. Our development agreement with the developer requires him to construct a regional golf amenity. Again, pictures will be shown Wednesday, and it's cool. It's what we all anticipate what I'm talking about to be. And it also contemplates the turf ballfields and a hotel. In addition to that, there's a subject area that is for commercial, retail, and other things. I would not be surprised if one of those is a gas station.
So back in, when the initial project occurred, there was also a same TIF done then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And was it a twenty-year TIF as well then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so in January of 2023, that area there is going to be assessed a certain value, and then from that values what, that's where the property tax generation is going to occur, the tax for, for the next twenty years.
Correct.
And so that will, there'll be no reassessment in the next twenty years after that, is it going to be like a built-in sort of increase in value or not?
You want to handle it?
Sure. We would expect the county assessor to reassess the commercial property every year like they do normally. The minimum assessment will be thirty-two million for the whole one hundred and nine acres, but it's our contention that you would expect values in excess of thirty-two million and probably, you know, growing over that twenty years, so...
But in that, but in that twenty years, the number that was, that you guys have come up with, next year in January, it's going to stay, that number's going to stay the same for the next twenty years?
Yes.
So if it were to go to forty million, we would not get PEPAL or instructional support levy on top of that, from the thirty-two to the forty million is what he's asking?
You would. It goes up incrementally with that assessed valuation growth. So you're not locked in at thirty, the thirty-two million amount, if there's more growth, you're going to see the incremental growth with that. And kind of just...
And the incremental growth, that percentage will then pump back to the school in PEPAL and ISL?
Yes, hundred percent. So, and one thing, just to kind of put it in scope, we set, this one, we're setting an aggregate minimum assessment amount of thirty-two million dollars. On the, what was known as the Betplex side, Betplex LLC, we set a minimum assessment amount there of twenty-two million dollars. And today, with all the ancillary retail hotel and everything, the assessed value there today is currently fifty-three million. So we set it at twenty-two, there was a retail component of that to take it to thirty, because we had an additional eight million dollar minimum assessment on some of the hotel area. But what's there today, even though we set it at roughly thirty, is fifty, almost fifty-three million in valuation, and it's going to continue to grow. By setting this at thirty-two million, I would not be surprised if it achieves something close to double that in four to five years, which means you're going to get additional PEPAL, additional levy increases as well. We don't legislate that, the assessor does, but that'll grow, we don't set the amount you get, as he goes up, we all get more, we all win in that scenario, so...
And at, next year, when it does get assessed, who, is it the county assessor, who assesses it?
Correct, county assessor.
So it's not like you have several different assessors and then you take one of them and assess it?
No, so Davenport, I believe, has their own city assessor, I believe, but the county is kind of the overseer of all, and the county, we don't have our own assessor.
Okay.
County sets all of ours, so...
Okay, okay.
It's going to be a heavy construction year this summer, Forest Grove and Middle. We're going to do the entire construction under traffic, so there will be detours, but there will never be any closures of Forest Grove and Middle, but there will be four roundabouts coming in this corridor by this time next year, just slightly thereafter, as part of that expansion. So you can expect the intersections of all of those collector roads and the arterial at Forest Grove and Middle to be a roundabout scenario.
So when is, when are you planning on starting that?
So the utilities have actually started to be buried. If you go out to that area right now, across from like Oscars and the Foundry, you can see a lot of dirt and tubes and things, they're burying the electrical utilities right now. The road construction's going to go out to bid in March, we expect it to start with construction probably as early as April, and it'll take a full year to construct all those improvements, so lots of detours. ForestGroveDrive.com is a website that's been put up by our engineer specifically for this project.
So our busing needs to know about that as well, I guess?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that the kids get there on time, especially with all the detours and everything.
I assure you, Mr. Struce, Mr. Zimmer, the staff here does a great job of communicating, and anything we're going to do with public, excuse me, our Public Works Department, our PD, will be happy to oblige with the school. We know it's not going to be anything that's easy for any of us, so...
Right. Okay, great.
You know, I'm just, I want to thank these two guys and the whole city for the work that they've done, they've been very transparent with us. When we talk about TIFs and what we like and don't like about TIFs, they understand we will not put on a residential, they will not layer TIFs. So for example, the one on TBK side right now, that is at what, seventeen years left? Some of that, roughly seventeen years. This will be a new twenty year, they're not going to put the two together and make it be a full twenty again, so we appreciate that. And then you look at what it does bring to the area from an economic standpoint, hopefully it does draw people to the area, housing markets will continue to grow, so again, we don't have to approve this, it's just us saying, we understand, and we appreciate what they're doing with the level, and hopefully continue to get some tax revenue for us.
And I would say, Mr. Struce, I'm sorry, I would say too, if you have any further questions on the developer, Wednesday morning at nine will be the full press conference. Obviously, the fun part of that is seeing the pictures and the videos of everything they're going to be doing, but there's going to be financials provided on everything everywhere to show the proposed property tax increases, that it's going to support the schools and the city and the county, sales tax projections, hotel motel tax projections, so it's pretty much a full frontal. This is to Mr. Struce's point, everyone's trying to be above the board on this. Where we have peace of mind now, this time versus the last time, is there was a sports complex in the middle of a cornfield, there was no basis for anything to refer that to. I mean, what do you compare it to? There's nothing. Well, now we have this track record of success, and we've projected everything incredibly conservative, and we think that even where we're at today, we're going to far exceed that, so...
Can I ask one question really quick? I think we have a lot of people in our area that are interested in a pool. What is, what's the status of, I know you talked about, you know, what are you doing with Splash Landing and all of that, has any of that been, what is that?
No comment at this time, thank you.
I mean, could it win?
No, so as far as water goes in Bettendorf, there's a contemplation right now, we need a new public pool. Splash Landing is sixty-four years old, I swam there when I was a kid and I'm old. It's, it costs us how much every year just to get that thing started up? I mean, fifty, sixty thousand bucks?
Oh, easy.
Yeah, so just to get it started every year, because there's always cracks, you know, issues. So we are in the process right now of looking at options for a new pool. We believe the perfect site for that is kind of in Central City, right there on that corner. So we expect a plan to move forward where we would try to figure out a new public pool right there and make it as awesome as it possibly could be, as far as...
Where Splash Landing is, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes. So we think we're, we're on a trajectory right now to figure out a way for next year to try to figure out how we can construct a new pool. We're trying to avoid a referendum, we don't want to go down that path, so we're trying to figure this out with an operating means, because we just don't want to open that door. If it was necessary, we would, but we have it on pretty good authority that it's what, how many, million-dollar project?
Ten to eleven million.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure out that scenario, but construction of a new pool is definitely on the radar. The other faction of that is competitive pools, and there's a strong market and demand for competitive pools. So we're pursuing some options there, too. Getting into the market as a city and having competition pools, I don't know, but we are certainly looking at that because we know, you guys have a great swim team, they've been rocking it all over social media for the last couple weeks, I've been watching that. Bettendorf has a great swim program, there's a market for a competition pool, we're trying to figure out how that all works out and what it looks like as well, without having to do that, because that seems to be more like maybe something that's regional or all-encompassing versus Splash Landing is for a community, right, for Bettendorf, so...
Thank you.
Sure.
Is this farmland, is it going to all the way butt up to Pleasant Valley's, the land that we own where Forest Grove is?
So that's a good question, I believe it does. So yeah, so the Venhorst Farm, are you familiar with the Venhorst Farm? So the Venhorst Farm is the farm that just consented to come in. So yes, this development could potentially include that Venhorst Farm, which would butt into it, yes. It's possible. I don't believe that that's part of this first phase of this development, but I wouldn't be surprised...
Okay, it'll be closer to Middle Road, the first phase.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if the developer somehow acquires the Venhorst Farm though, and develops it commercially too.
So it'll be commercial all the way up to Forest Grove, right?
If not, the only thing that would be between the two would be the Venhorst Farm, realistically, yeah.
Eventually, there'd be a street, if I remember correctly, there'd be a street that would go from Forest Grove Drive north...
Yes.
To the west of our school, so right now, it's going to like a turn lane in.
Got it.
That would eventually turn into a street.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And our current turn lane would go, our buses would be on that turn lane, and then turn out into the street, which would be west of that yet, so...
Correct.
Okay.
There'd be a dividing line.
Little separation.
So yeah, by and large, this phase is going to be mostly the Middle Road and Forest Grove corridor, and then all that land up there, kind of northwest of the Venhorst Farm, but I really wouldn't be surprised at some point if that's acquired, so...
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, for being transparent, for giving us the information, and we look forward to seeing the, hearing all the details in a place.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so that actually ends our new business, and so we have future dates, we have Monday, February twenty-eighth, board meeting at five-thirty, which will be again next week, I mean, in two weeks, and then Monday, March twenty-first, we only have one board meeting in March, as we have traditionally done in the past, and that will be the Monday after spring break, and that will be at six PM.
No, it's five-thirty.
Wait, backwards.
Oh, it's not, it's got changed to five-thirty?
I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Next one, the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth is at five-thirty, March twenty-first is at also five-thirty?
That's six.
No, that's at six?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So I flipped them, I'm sorry. I'll come through. I have a wrong...
Yeah, it's different on each.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll fix it.
So again, Monday, February twenty-eighth is at five-thirty, Monday, March twenty-first is at six PM, is that correct, Mr. Zimmer?
I will check and let you know.
Okay, sounds great. All right, is there anything else for the go-to-the-order? Not this meeting, so...